My friend Mary is in large impact this weekend, so she's gonna kind of get a little bit of a lead going. I just noticed, how long has the pandemic been? The pandemic just went up like about a week or so.
Yeah.
Evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Riddley Township Board Commissioners Meeting. It's March 23rd, 2022. We'll deal with questions in the flag. The flag should be raised in the United States of America. To the Republic, for its saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Read the call this meeting to order, read the roll call. Mr. Saraceni here. Mr. Barset.
Here.
Mrs. Cummings.
Here.
Ms. McMenamin.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Mr. McCray.
Here.
Mr. Whirlin.
Here.
Ms. Malsacka.
Present.
Mr. McDowley.
Here.
Let's see, roll call, Mr. President. Thank you. We have, Ms. Malsacka is on the phone participating. She's training for a new position. She has been, has been trained at six o'clock in time for some reason. So, but she is actively doing her duties during the day and Fridays as our manager can attest, she's on the bell. So, may she join us by phone at least, John, so bear witness.
I'm here.
I'll be down. Okay, public forum. Chad, you're up.
I don't want you to think I'm taking John's, what's his name's place.
Have you started, have you started talking about my Christmas lights? He started driving, checking out my house, and I'll go where.
Janet Diorio, 426 Fridley Avenue in Falls. And again, people ask me questions, and that's why I tell them I come to the meeting, so I will ask your questions. The American Rescue Plan, any, any decisions on how that money's being spent?
We are very close, that way. I think my next month will have, rolling out sometime.
Because I noticed they're doing some kind of, like, looks like drainage work, and it's not an eight, but I think it's, what's five is the next word over, around Firwood, around Fourth and Fifth.
We have a large drainage project going throughout the township.
Well, the neighbors are seeing that, and they're all asking if it's, because they're all, everyone has water problems, you know, so everyone's asking, and I'm like, I'll ask about it, but I don't.
Yeah, I would think anybody that has water problems anywhere, contact the commissioner, and they'll have a list, and we drive it, the engineer checks them out, and we'll see what we have.
Okay. And the, the people at Waverly and Agnes, is that still, they're still working on that for those people?
Oh, yes, definitely, yeah.
Okay, all right.
But do you have questions about that?
No, they, you know, they said that I ran into someone, and they said they haven't heard and had any updates since last month, I guess.
Updates about what? I'm just looking at progress.
Yeah, they just, they said they haven't heard any more, any, any updates.
So, yeah, the latest is we're currently waiting for a DEP permit to dredge parts of the crack. And then the other, the other application for the houses to be bought out, they're saying it could be a year. I mean, that's moving, that's FEMA.
Okay. All right. Well, someone's, but someone's talking to them, right?
Yes.
Yeah, Shannon, I know Shannon just talked to them this week.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, I called to somebody this week already about this issue.
Okay. And the other question, the Marine Training Center, any update on that, what's going in there, what the government's going to do?
The last time I spoke to them was the fact that if the Marines decide to not reuse it, it's then offered to all the other military branches if they want it. If they decide not to have it, then it's offered to other government agencies before the public, before, we couldn't even get it.
Before we get shot.
And they told me, last time I talked to them, that's like a two-year process.
I see. Okay.
Nobody's moving in, no way. If we get any information about somebody moving in, we'll put it out.
Okay. That's it, it's all gone. All right, thank you.
Anyone else for public forum? Okay, thank you. Moving on, approval of previous meeting minutes February 23rd, 2022. Motion approved.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Before we get into the manager report, I thought Barbara Lawrenceby would be here, our reporter at large. I mean, she's watching us, hopefully she is, because on Saturday, March 26th, Barbara will have her 90th birthday. We wanted to wish Barbara a happy birthday, and I know she's probably going to kill me for announcing that.
You've got to bring a cake next to you.
Yeah, exactly.
She's going to be.
Actually, your son told me that on Saturday, so, I'm sure he'll hit me with their walker. Barbara, we all wish you a happy birthday, and she's been with us for many, many, many years, covering us. And I can tell you one thing about Barbara, it's always been the straight story. There was never, she never had any slant on anything. She always gave every story a fair shake, and that's all you can ask out of any reporter, and she, she does it, does it very well, and has done it well for many, many years. So, and hopefully she'll, a lot more years to go. Managers' reports.
Right. Thank you, Mr. President. We received a request for a block party along the 700 block of Clymer Lane Saturday, June 11th, 2022. All the required paperwork has been received, and a motion to approve, to approve would be in order. I'd like to make the motion to approve that.
I'll second. Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Sorry, Jim.
Back in 1981, the township had acted ordinance number 1508, indicating a certain portion of Haddon Avenue between Highland and Brighton Tarts, but it was never recorded. Fast forward to now, when the property is being considered for development, this was put to light. Our zoning hearing board solicitor reviewed the matter, and recommended township execute a quit plane deed, which would confirm the township's vacation of Haddon Avenue back in 1981. A motion to authorize execution of this deed would be in order. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right. I wanted to speak, but I couldn't get in.
You can speak.
Oh, thank you, sir. I'm going to finish the news, sir.
Can we finish that, Bertie?
Yeah, if you guys want to finish something, go ahead.
One more thing, all right.
Sure, one more than one. No problem, no problem.
Okay, we wanted to update the board on our municipal auctions. Well, everyone, municipal bid is a public auction site for government agencies to post unused equipment. We posted three vehicles that we're getting rid of. The 2006 GMC Envoy went at auction for $6,010. The 2009 Dodge Durango went for $5,800. We're still receiving bids on a 2011 Jeep Grand Cherokee. Approval to award the GMC and Dodge to the highest bidders would be in order.
Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carried.
That's my report, Mr. President.
Okay, you're on.
All right, sir.
You don't have, you can find, we can find here.
Just go from there.
I have pretty big mail. First concern I have tonight, sir.
Name and address.
Oh, James Michael Donahue Jr., 2644 Armstrong Avenue, Holmes, Pennsylvania, 19043. Okay. First item I'd like to discuss tonight is, since it has not been published, I'd like to know what the results were from the audit of the Lenzel Economics Accounting Firm.
Our 2021 audit?
Yes.
Has that been certified yet?
It won't be until around June.
June, sir?
That's correct.
Okay. The other item I'd like to speak about tonight is the money from the Go Back Better from the federal government.
I was already asked earlier tonight.
They said, I already asked that, they're working on that.
It's still coming, probably next month.
Next month, probably, I don't have it, I guess, let's know.
Okay, all right, well, let that go ahead, sir. Thank you very much. All right, sir, Chad.
Thank you. Recyclant report. Mr. McDowley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. What's the report? Trash collected in Feb, please, trash collected in February was 939.99 tons. Recyclant collected in February was 160.10 tons. Collected seven TVs and monitors in February through our television and monitor recycling program. More information on this program is available on the township website at www.ridleytp.org. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Charles reports.
Nothing to see on, sir.
Services report, Mr. Gail, I hear you.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Hey, engineers report, we put your tag.
Thank you, Mr. President. Have certificates for consideration. Radiator Communication Service, the 2022 Police Radiator Maintenance Contract, $3,229.01. ADU Services, the 2022 Storm and Sanitary Store Contract, $12,577.20. And Abidazeo Contractors, the Pennvest Stormwater Improvements, $512,247.58. Mobile Dredging and Video Plank Incorporated, the Braxton Road Sanitary Store Rehabilitation Project, $48,793.18. Moore Constructed Services Incorporated, the Swatmore University storm drain reconstruction, $5,220. Moore Construction Services Incorporated, 1214 McDavid Boulevard Storm Store Installation, $7,650. Mara Allen Concrete Products, for the Harper Road Bridge rehabilitation. Change Order Number One, and payment in the amount of $51,903.92. McMahon Associates for the Arley Grant, $1,927.50. Traffic Planning and Design for the Green Light Go Grant, $5,731.14.
I'd like to make the motion to approve certificates, that's for Ed.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
One extra, these considerations, the Wawa at 390 East Chester Plate, in the amount of $469,908.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The tabulation of bids, the Mullenberg Avenue cover, received three bids for this project, they're still being reviewed, and we'll have something for the board next month. We have a resolution for the Bowens Lane Bridge retro reimbursement. This is replacing another Bowens Lane Bridge over Crum Creek. This is just a resolution authorizing the reimbursement from PennDOT for that work.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The 2022 Rover Servicing Program, going to ask for authorization to advertise that project.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The Pennvest project status. Currently, they're doing plate work on Minota Avenue, Lensey Road. Another crew is doing restoration on Hazel, Michelle, Firwood, and Wyndham. There's three projects remaining, Stanbridge, Armstrong, and Wendy. This will be the third time bringing in supply issues. We do not, not expect the materials for that project to be on-site until the end of April, so there's going to be a little bit of more delay on that project. And that's all I have.
You're finding that a lot, sure.
Yeah.
I love your brand news. Okay. Highway Sanitation Committee report, McCray.
Yeah, I'd like to remind the residents that there be no trash collection on Friday, April 15th, in observance of the holiday. Also, Delaware County, Delaware County's first hazardous waste collection event of this year will be held on Saturday, April 23rd. That's going to be at the Emergency Services Training Center at 1600 Calken Hook Road in Darby Township from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. This event is by appointment only, and you can register at delcohhw.ebright.com to register. And there's more information on our township webpage, that's at www.ridleytp.org. That's all I have.
Thank you. Martin Lawrence Committee report, Steve, anything?
Not so good, thank you, President.
Recreation Committee report, Mr. McMenamin.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Spring Basketball League will begin next week, evaluation on Monday and Thursday evenings. The league is capped at 90 players. The league is capped at 90 players, and there are only a few spots to register online early. There might not be any available when you go there on Monday, so, please take a look. The pickleball court is open for play. However, we are waiting for a stretch of warm, dry weather to redo the services, the lines again.
That's correct.
But it is open for Steve and Mike to go and practice.
Everyone's invited.
The Summer Recreation Newsletter will be posted next week, with online registration opening April 1st. Playground Camp locations will be Amis Land, Edgewood, and Woodland Schools, Leadham Community Center, and Black Rock Park. Grace Park School cannot be used this year due to construction at the school. Each location is going to be capped at 60 children, so sign up early. There are also a variety of athletic camps, including Boys and Girls Lacrosse, Field Hockey, Tennis, Softball, and Bob's favorite, the Zumba Gold Classes. For more information on these and other programs, as well as for online registration, go to our website at www.ridleytp.org under Parks and Recreation. Also, like the Ridley Township Recreation Facebook page, and then this way you'll receive upcoming summer playground and sport camps information and registration information once you do that. Thank you.
Thank you. A Public Safety Committee report. Busy month. For month of February, I placed in 892 calls. The service breakdown is as follows. Crum Lane, 84, Folsom, 209, Holmes, 97, Belmont Park, 43, Morton, 45, Ridley Park, 122, Ste. King, 63, Swatmore, 43, and Woodland Inn, 186. I see the captain back there, busy with his calls, and of course, everybody has seen on the news about the discovery of the marina this past weekend on Saturday, and I want to commend everybody involved here at the township who did a great job working with this, this crew that comes in to solve cold cases. Very impressive people. First of all, I want to commend Denise at the marina who discovered them coming in, talked with them, and alerted the police on what was going on, and allowed them, working with them, to shut down a ramp and use it to try to see if they could find anything. They had no idea it was really there. They were just kind of on expedition. But she, she was credit for working hand in hand with them and seeing that, and learning the captain, and Lieutenant Hamel, the detective, and of course, the captain of the detective division. Mark McKinney did a great job that day, coming down and telling us what's going on, and really, really handled it very well in a very difficult situation, very emotional for a lot of people involved. I also want to commend Officer Judge and Officer Eisen who handled, people come, want to come down to docks and trying to make sure everybody's safe. As you can imagine, they're glad things, people don't want to get down there, so there's a lot of crowd control. Of course, it was a beautiful day, and there was a lot going on, but the way, the way our police, our whole police department, Captain, you guys did a great job, and of course, Joe was there, and he came right down. Just handled it with a lot of professionalism. The family was very grateful. The divers, the guys that do these, these cases, they've, they've never seen great cooperation like they have with the township, so, you guys did a great job. Also, I want to tell people how dangerous the waters are there, and they said that when they were diving, and we've heard this on the Chester dive team that practice there, the waters there are treacherous. They're not swimming that creek. They're not jumping over the, the currents are wicked, and there's debris that comes in and out from the Delaware River, you know, all day. So, it's very, very treacherous, and they, they said it was the toughest waters they ever had to dive.
I, I live right on that creek, and I've seen, I've unfortunately had several thefts behind there over, over the years that I've lived there. And we're always, with the Little League down there and things like that, we're always making sure the kids are aware that you do not go anywhere near that water. That water right there is, is one of the swiftest moving creeks in, in the country, really, so.
So, they did a great job. We have a letter here to Captain Dougherty on behalf of our family. We'd like to recommend the ser, we'd like to commend the services of the Ridley Township Police Department, in particular, Michael Greeley, for handling the recent incident that occurred on March 15th. Also, Greeley responded to a call very quickly and made a visit to our home, needless to say, we were overwhelmed and distraught. He was, he was not only very professional and detail minded, but compassionate at the same time. We wanted to express our thanks to both Ridley Township Police for always doing a great job to keep our community safe, and to Officer Greeley for helping to navigate an uncertain situation. Everything ended up being resolved, and we are forever grateful. Charles Amerian Salerno. Thank you. I'll make sure it goes in file. Lastly, just want to, we want to acknowledge our, our police did a great job on the carjacking that just happened yesterday, the playboy was at the Morton Avenue, Wawa, and they, they chased them down, and they, they caught and arrested the two individuals that did it. So, another great job right away, too, so. Just want to remind everybody, there has been, in the whole area, there's been, seems like a influx of carjackings and car thefts, not just in Ridley, but in the entire area, so just be alert and look around your surroundings, and if you see anything, 911 right away, and we'll, we'll be responding, but really, keep an eye on what you're, what you're, what you're doing out there. It's a crazy world right now, so. That's all I have. Health and Community Committee report. Sharon.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the month of February, we had 145 permits issued, 39 contractors registered, 36 certificates of occupancy issued, 26 rental inspections, and 14 health inspections. I'd also like to make a motion to appoint Jacqueline Smith to the Board of Health. Jackie holds several certifications, including a Master's of Science in Nursing, Certified Registered Nurse Practitioner, Advanced Oncology Certified Nurse Practitioner, and Nurse Practitioner Certification, and currently works at the Hospital of the University of Pennsylvania. We know she will be a great addition, and we look forward to working with her.
Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Building Committee report. Mr. Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. President. We received a request from RJ Sun Realty LLC asking for a three-month extension to review the final land development application for proposed Chipotle and Urgent Care 2603 and 2623 East McDay Boulevard Homes. I'd like to make a motion to approve this extension.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
As you know, we received an application from John Pritchard, 646 Michigan Avenue, to develop over three acres of that property with 12 single-family dwellings, a new road, and new stormwater basin. I'd like to make a motion to approve this application, subject to compliance with the alternate Township engineer's comments. I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And third and lastly, we received an application from Chick-fil-A to demolish a portion of the existing building, constructed building, addition with dual driving through lanes and canopies. I'd like to make a motion to approve this application, subject to the satisfaction of the Township engineer's comments.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? I'd like to add that Ms. Cummings, Mr. Ryan did a great job with meeting with the neighbors and making a resolution on all that, and really, sounds like everybody is satisfied, so, very good.
And I'll get my chicken fester.
Get your chicken fester. Well, get some cars off of McDay, and I'm trying to... Any other questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Library Research Center Committee report. Ms. Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The library will host a lecture about some of the worst cases of murder for life insurance in southeastern Pennsylvania, including the Buttersburg tragedy, the Sarah Voitling murders, H.H. Holmes, and more on Tuesday, March 29th, at 7:00 p.m. on Zoom. Register online to receive a link. Board of Trustees ran two fundraisers in 2021 that enabled the library to add some new items to the library of things, including an electric pressure washer, a digital film scanner, a projector with screen, a travel power adapter, a portable scan, scanner, and more. The full list is available on our website. Children love to play dress up, but quickly outgrow their play clothes. To celebrate the halfway point to Halloween, the library will host a Halfway to Halloween costume swap at the end of April. Simply donate your child's gently used costumes, receive a swap ticket, and return to pick out a new-to-you costume. More details are available online. There were 4,001 visits to the library in February. Residents checked out or downloaded 11,124 books and other materials. Program attendance was 3,122 for children, teens, and adult classes and activities. More information or to register for programs and activities, visit our website, www.ridleylibrary.org. I'd also like to make a motion to appoint Edna Fury to the library board vacancy. She has years of volunteer experience, and I think she'll be a very good asset to the library board.
I'll second that.
Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Finance Committee report. Ms. Marsette.
Thank you, Mr. President. All commissioners received air listed bills this month, and I'd like to make a motion to approve, subject to the controller's review.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any question on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any older new business?
Oh, yes, in first ward, first precinct. We will be having a crumbling cleanup day Saturday, April 2nd. We're going to meet at 9:00 a.m. at the Knights of Columbus Park Lot on Half Street Grove. Anybody in that area or any other area that wants to help pick up trash, come on by. That's all.
Sounds fine.
I just want to thank the police and all the township employees that have helped and is very, very jizzy with everything.
I'll go. Yeah, just a reminder to the residents, spring has sprung almost, pretty much, and we're getting into Little League season, and kids getting out of school and wanting to run home. As always, and I know I'm not speaking for just my ward, I know I'm speaking for everybody else's ward, too, please slow down, please obey the stop signs, there's little kids running everywhere, and we don't need a tragedy in our town. We've, and the captain will attest to it, we've done stop sign stops, we've done these, we've talked about this a million times up here. It's, it may not be the residents on your block that are blowing through that stop sign, but it's the residents from two blocks away. And it may not be, you may not be blowing the stop sign in front of your house, but you're, you're blowing a stop sign four blocks away. So, it's our own residents doing this, and we need to slow down, we need to take our time, and we need to get out there and protect our kids in, in the springtime when they're ready to go have fun. You're not going to stop them, so, all right, thank you. That's all I have.
Just real quick, as I like saying, spring has sprung, but for people that are cutting their grass or have landscapers, please let them know that you can't just blow the clippings out into the street, because once they get into the sewer system, it clogs it up, so, please pick up your clippings and let your landscapers know that, too.
So, I wish everyone a happy Easter. We'll be here for that, so, happy Easter, everybody. Yes, happy 60th birthday to all.
Okay. Version two in charge.